I'd like to call the regular meeting of Hibbing Public Schools, SD 701, for order. It's May 3rd at 2:30 PM. We like saving time in the boardroom of Hibbing. I'd like to welcome you all here. And with that, we'll move to item 2 of the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you will. I wish.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to item 3, motion to approve the agenda.
Aho.
Parted. Move by Director Folcher, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. So with that, we'll move to item 4, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Someone.
Support.
Move by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McLaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item 5, public forum. We show who won't be signed up. So with that, we'll move to item 6, and I'll turn that over to Superintendent Rippe.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have Megan Reynolds and some of our drama theater students. And Megan is here to talk about maintaining the theater program. Ms. Reynolds? I think H Pat would like you to stand at the podium, if that's possible.
Sure. I brought, this is a copy of the presentation that I'm going to give, so that way I don't have to say all the words in it, and you all can cruise it at your leisure, as I can get a little wordy. Thanks.
I might just, your volume, just with that mic. Sometimes it's loud, sometimes it's quiet. Make sure you're...
Hello.
There you go.
Thank you all so much for having me, and our students and our parents here today. I wanted to come and just introduce myself, say hello. I've been working as the theater director for the Winter One Act and the Spring Play for the last three and a half years, and I've never come and spoken to the board before. And I just wanted to talk about some of the work that we've been doing, the things that we've been building in the program. And my goals today are to try to demonstrate the value of theater education in the school, and both some of the value that I see reflected back from parents and students, and as well as to hear from a couple of our students and a parent. Talk about some of the things that we worked on for the last three and a half years, how we've built that value, the skills and time and activities that we built that value with, and then how we partner in the future, how we continue to develop the program and for it to continue to be an asset to the Hibbing Public School system. So, I came to this job because there was an article in the newspaper that was titled Drama at HHS Drama, and was a classic small-town newspaper article. And I called the, at the time, activities director and said, "Hey, I have a background in theater, I don't know if you can help out." And Megan Potter, at the time, called me back right away and said, "We would love to have you come work in that program." I hadn't done theater for 10 years. I'd been primarily musician at the time. And then I came and started working with the students on one act, and I was immediately hooked by our students. They are such an amazing group of kids who are devoted to one another, devoted to collaborating, and devoted to working at the edge of their ability and finding personal growth through artistic work. It was really inspiring. And those are some of the big benefits that I see of kids who come through the program. There's an increased sense of self-confidence, and they, for some students have actually spoken to me that their mental health has increased due to having an activity in a place where they feel comfortable. The community norms that are part of our program are, and these are community norms that are really peer-informed, that there's very little that I have to do to make sure that our space is one of empathy, caring, students supporting one another, open discussions of conflict and resolution, and showing up as their authentic selves. I think the thing that makes both team sports and theater really unique in terms of developing skills is that I think the biggest skills that people carry forward out of this kind of collaborative work are these highly-desirable soft skills that employers talk about wanting to see in the workplace. This idea of being able to show up as a team, function collaboratively, putting one's ideas aside for the betterment of the group, being held responsible to the group for their own work, that like your ability to do your own work and show up for the group affects the group, the group as a whole. And I think in that way, it's similar to some of the lessons that students take from team sports. The difference is that we are always working in a collaborative model, and so for students who do not respond well to competition, this is a place that they can work those skills but not have to be in a competitive atmosphere, because that doesn't feed everybody. It doesn't feed me. And maybe that's why I ended up in theater. And I also think part of the power of, at least the extracurricular portion of this, is that students choose to show up. And what that allows me to do as a coach is to hold a very high standard of work and work ethic, so that when I see a student who's not living up to that work ethic, I can say, "You need to meet this level, or you don't need to be here." And consistently, students rise to meet that level. And that's why they excel, I think, in an extracurricular program. You can tell I'm very proud of them. So, I just, I thought it would be lovely to hear from some of my students, so I'm going to have them each come up and just say just a few words about what their experience has been in the program and what they've taken forward from the program. The first student you're going to hear from is Lindsay Steinbrecker. She's a senior, and she works primarily backstage as a stage manager and assistant director. Lindsay?
Hi. As Megan said, my name is Lindsay. I'm a senior this year, so this is my last year of drama. And over my time at HHS Drama, I think what's been most impactful are the leadership and communication skills that I've really got to grow into. Especially our last show, we learned a lot about how to cooperate with one another to problem-solve when things go wrong in short periods of time. There's a lot going on all the time, and you really have to rise to meet the expectations, but also to pull together all the components that a show requires. And so that accountability and responsibility is really important, as is effectively managing the team, which is something I plan to continue to use in my future career and educational path. So I'm really grateful for the opportunity I've had here. And this is a really good environment, I think, for students to explore themselves and their skills in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next student is Christina Helverson. She's a junior. Christina? Hello. And she's primarily performer.
Hello. Like she said, I am Christina. I have been in the drama department for five years. And when I started, I was very nervous and I was quite shy. And as I grew into the community and the people around me, I started to open up more. And now I am one of the leaders of the group. And I am starting to be able to welcome other people into the community so that they can feel welcome, and they're no longer scared like I used to be when I was younger. And this definitely built my confidence up, so that I'm able to speak in front of the public more than I used to be able to. I would stutter a lot and do the classics. But now, I'm able to do this, and I'm able to perform. In fact, I was the lead in the She Kills Monsters performance that we did just last week. Now, I am able to... Okay. Still working on that nerves part. But other than that, I am glad I was able to come here and speak for my community, because it's, drama definitely helped me when I was in a bad place. I remember, I used to think that there wasn't much else I could do with my life, but because of Megan, I was able to open myself up more and try new things out. So I'm glad I was able to stick with this community, and as I'm going on in the future, I know that this build confidence will be able to help me in the career I hope to work on.
One second. I've been doing this for 28 years here, and I still get that hiccup.
Thank you.
I love it. Thank you.
Makes me feel better. And our last student is De'Oh Warren, eighth grader. Eighth grader.
Hi. As Megan said, my name is De'Oh Warren, and I'm here with everyone else to advocate for our school's drama program. Theater has taught me so many things, without me even truly knowing it. My confidence in myself has reached new heights ever since joining, and it truly brought me out of my shell. Theater is the reason I am able to stand here today in front of all of you. Theater is in fact the reason as to why I'm still in this school, or otherwise, I would be down in shop feet. I have met some of the most incredible people in my life through theater, and I hope you can understand why it is so important to students like me. Theater has boosted my confidence and public speaking abilities. Being able to play a character and be in the moment inside the scene completely erases my fear, which is honestly impressive, because I have social anxiety. And confidently speaking within a character has ensured me that I can do such myself. Theater has surrounded me with people who are creative and like-minded to me. I've always felt like an outcast and never have many friends. But when I came to theater, there was an incredible amount of lovely people like me, and it helped me not feel alone. I struggle with mental health, and knowing I have these people like me I can surround myself with is extremely helpful. Thank you for your time, and I hope you continue to support our program.
Thank you. All right. And then I'd like to introduce Dr. Kristen Frederickson. She's a parent of Kate Reckmeyer, who is a senior theater student.
Hello. I'm Kristen Frederickson. Like Megan said, my daughter Kate Reckmeyer is a senior, and she'll be going to the University of Minnesota in the fall. My sons are freshmen. We've lived here 17 years, and we have been so blessed to work with Megan and the Hibbing Drama Department over the past three years. Our kids have been blessed to have a beautiful auditorium and an unmatched physical space. And now we have a director that exceeds all of our expectations. Drama definitely helped my daughter Kate. She'll have a lot of memories of the high school, but theater will be one of the best. Drama provided a space for her creativity, uniqueness, and general teenage angst to grow into something very special. Initially, it seemed like at the high school, the only way to accolades and to meet your group of friends was through sports, and I think my daughter and a lot of kids struggled with that. And once she found theater, it was kind of her group of peers and her group of friends. And it was, you know, prized to be intellectually strong and to be gleeful, and that was, that just fit her. As a physician, I see the effects of children and teens struggling with anxiety, depression, and obesity every day, and they're all very tied together. And drama offers a very healthy space for all of those kids. They're constantly moving, they feel secure where they are, they learn to do what they can with their bodies and their minds, and feel comfortable with themselves. Actors are pushed to memorize an incredible amount of material while being present with their scene partners. Students who work behind the scenes learn to create sets, operate lights and sound, and manage the space as a whole. Megan has created an incredible department. We have advanced sections in the last two years, and we've competed against much larger schools. And we placed third most recently. One of the judges rated us first. I ask each of you to support our drama department under the directorship of Megan. Our committee has been given a gift and is receiving accolades from around the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan, you don't teach, right?
What's that?
You don't teach, you just...
I'm just in the extracurricular side right now. That's great.
Okay. So just what percent employee are you? Really, like half-time?
I'm not even half-time. I'm a contract employee. So, my contract is to direct the one act in the winter, and then the spring play, and then Megan Zubich directs our Fall Musical. But when I came into the program three and a half years ago, there wasn't any leadership. The position that I'm in had turned over consistently for several years before I arrived in it. And so there was no, just like a sports program that has a new coach every year, you can't really build anything without that kind of consistency. And I could feel that in the student body. The students didn't feel like there was anyone in the community who supported them, or who really knew who had the skills to like, to offer them something. So, I sort of took it upon myself, because I saw that need in the student body and was so excited about working with the students, to figure out, how can we start to put pieces in place? So a lot of what I've done was far beyond my job description. And have sort of built a team with Megan Zubich and Susan Nelson when she was here, and then Dustin Davidson, who is another just community member who volunteers all of his time at the theater. He's an instrumental member of our team that we don't pay. Or if we do, it's a small stipend that comes out of our ticket earnings, that we sort of pay him when we can. But right now, there's an enormous amount of skill in the community around this. I'm not going to go through all of this, you guys can read this at your own leisure, but the big things to know are that I have a degree in theater, I did some professional theater, I did professional training programs out here at my NFA. And so, to develop a program like this and to tackle more difficult material, we tackled Shakespeare last year, to develop performance and technical skills in students requires a really specific set of knowledge, and it's barely rare up in rural northern Minnesota. So, in order to continue, I think, as I think about the program as we move forward, my biggest goal is that when I am ready to hand this piece off, what I don't want to see is the program to sort of collapse in on itself, because the engine right now is me, if that makes sense. That my goal in coming to you all is to work with you as we move forward, and I continue to work with these students, to build a plan so that the program could continue beyond me. So, there's a whole bunch of things we've accomplished in the last three and a half years. I won't go through all of them. We have more students participating, we have more people coming to see plays, we are placing higher at the Winter One Act, so we're competing against elite area schools. I very much hope to make it to state in the next three years. We are producing a wider variety of material. We're so blessed that Megan Zubich is here, she's a wonderful director. So the Fall Play really has become a piece that is super palatable to the community. It's got made, we planned it for name recognition, we make sure that everybody can come to that play. One Act has become an opportunity for me to work very intensely with a small group of performers, because the number is limited and it's a smaller piece. So that is kind of, I use that as an intensive training program for our performers. And then Spring is about developing some aspect, choosing one aspect of performance and theater building to really focus on. So, the way that I think about the program is as a curricular set of units, that I'm trying to develop well-rounded theater kits and give them something new to chew on. The other thing that I've done is we started to build up the program down in the K through sixth level. So I ran a Fall Drama Club at the Lincoln this year that had, was over-enrolled before I told them they had to stop showing up with checks the second. I had 30 students in that, and more kids kept trying to show up. We worked with the Fall Musical, and we brought in about 30 third through sixth graders, and they actually participated in the Fall Musical this year. So they worked with me, and I blocked them. They learned a scene, they learned a dance and music. We're going to do that again this fall with our fall production. And I've also started doing summer theater, summer week-long theater workshops for first through third and fourth through sixth, and that's a five-day workshop. And I have my senior theater students come and mentor in those programs, and so they are sort of student teaching and that. With the idea that the way to build a program is to engage students earlier, and I think it also helps build a more diverse program. When, I think by the time we get to high school, there tends to be some stratification of how sort of kids group themselves into their segregated peer groups, and if we catch them earlier, we can catch a wider diversity of student in the program. That's really one of my big goals, is how this program becomes accessible and interested, interesting to a wider variety of student. So, let me see. I think I mentioned everything that I wanted to mention. There's some other things that we've done in terms of community collaboration and enrichment. We take an annual trip down to the cities. The community has really grown, and the students' access to a wide variety of theater has grown. The place, the things that we need to think about as we go forward are, from what I see twofold. One is to address the issue of theater in the academic side of the school. Susan Nelson had instituted that program, and I know that she retired in January. And I wanted to come and advocate for some presence of theater on the academic side of things. I think number one, the student body is hungry for arts offerings, they're hungry for creative offerings in the catalog. Some of the most popular courses that kids are signing up for are things like jewelry making, and photography, and ceramics, and costume design. So finding a way to continue to offer those art courses, to me, seems really important, because part of the problem we're having is students, especially high-flying students, heading over to the college to take some of those more advanced courses. So, one of the things that that theater class does is it, there's nowhere else on the Iron Range, students at this HHS take a theater class. The college doesn't offer it, Rod Ridge doesn't offer it, I checked Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids doesn't offer it. That's something that's really unique that Hibbing has been able to do for its students. So I think that's a really powerful lever in terms of looking at, how do we bring students and keep students in this district? From a practicality standpoint, my position as a coach is incredibly time-intensive. And I checked in with a couple of other coaches to sort of compare hours, and actually, our hours are fairly comparable. Those coaches work so hard. The difference is that their season is 11 to 14 weeks long, and mine is nine. So I actually logged my hours for this production, which I'd never done before, which was a little bit of a shock to myself and my husband, and explained so much about why he's been so sad the last two weeks. But in nine weeks, I worked about 250 hours, and that averages to about 27 hours a week, but the 100 of those hours are in the last two weeks. So I worked two 50-hour weeks, which, I'm not a full-time teacher, but if I were, feels like a really heavy lift. So part of the concern for the future, too, is how do you construct this position such that it would be attractive to a qualified candidate, and also balanced in a workload setting? And that, I think, is one thing that makes theater and performing arts unique, is that often there's this crunch time. So how do you build a position? There's lots of suggestions in this document about how you might build a position, and I'm happy at any time to meet with you all and talk about potential, potentialities for that. So that's one of my concerns for the future. The other thing that I think we would be remiss to not talk about is the lack of the technical director in the auditorium. And I know that this has been a problem for a while. That space is a potential professional-quality space, but the knowledge that's needed to really run that space effectively, efficiently, and sustain it in a maintainable way requires professional-level skills, industry-level skills. I cannot speak more highly of our janitorial and grounds crew. I love them. We have a great working relationship, and I really respect the work that they do. But some of the stuff in there is really technical. And it's also stuff that I'm not a technical theater director. I am trained as a performer and a director, so, as I like to say, I know just enough to get myself in trouble, or to look like I know what I'm doing.
Excuse me, does Dustin Davidson do the technical?
So right now, Dustin does all of our technical direction for our productions. But he is not industry-trained. He has learned on the job. And that's, that's a reasonable way to learn in the industry, is to learn through internship. But he doesn't work in that industry. He has acquired all of his knowledge. Basically, he's self-taught. But he is the person that not just our department, but pretty much the whole school leans on when we have a question. And Community Ed does the same thing. They've got an outside group coming in, who hands it then a technical writer. There's no one in that office who knows how to parse that technical writer. And so they'll send it to me, and Dustin, and say, "Do we have these lighting capabilities?" And I'm like, "I don't know, I'm a director, not a lighting designer." So, in thinking about the future of performing arts, if you want to leverage performing arts at the school, that is a position that we have to think about how we fill that need, whether that's a position that could be constructed in collaboration with Community Ed? Could it be a shared position? Could it be a part-time position that's partially funded? I've thought about reaching, so I've been working with Minnesota North College in trying to get their theater back up online. Would they be interested in sharing a technical director? Could it be a part-time technical director position and part-time teaching position? That that person could come in and teach a design course and fulfill some of those, that could be part of the Career Academy's progress? There's a lot of different ways you could construct that position as well, to try to fulfill multiple needs. But it is a barrier to developing the program, not having that person in place. So those are the two main things that I think about when I think about the future of the program. I guess the big, the big invitation, I haven't come in with an ask, I'm not coming to ask you for more money, I'm not asking for a job, I'm not asking for a raise. I'm inviting you to think about the performing arts and theater, specifically the performing arts in general, as a possible lever in making, putting Hibbing schools on the map as an attractive place to be for students and families. And I know that we are facing budget constraints and shortfalls, and I empathize with that. And I would say that as you look at the school programming, both as a coach and also as a parent of two kids who are in elementary school but who are gifted and high flyers, I want to see, it hurts to think about programs being cut as a way to deal with that shortfall, because I think that's how we keep students and families in the district, is by those extra offerings. And theater's just one of those. I know that others are facing the same struggle. So, yeah, that's, I think the invitation is to think of this as a possible asset, and as one part of the long-term plan to increasing the solvency and success of Hibbing Public Schools. That's it. Any questions?
Are the summer, the summer classes you talked about, the three-day or five-day or whatever, is that through Community Ed?
I've been doing all that through Community Ed. All the stuff at the Lincoln's been through Community Ed.
Okay, so that'll be on their schedule?
Yes, yeah, that'll be coming up again.
My other question is, is Sue Nelson, is she still teaching those classes she developed? Or are they on our elective list, or are they gone?
So it's specific to that licensure that Sue held? So...
So they're not...
Megan references here the academic standards that we need to be compliant of, starting this fall. We're in place, we're set to do that, but it's being done, some of those standards are being met through FIAID classes, or through Mrs. Thompson's art classes, or through... So, we will be compliant, but it doesn't meet the same level of theater instruction that Mrs. Nelson was doing.
Okay, so she did those classes for what, a couple of years?
Ever since I've been here, so it's been at least four.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think for years. Maybe for years, for years.
Since the 2017, 2018 school year. That's when she started teaching those classes.
And they were just behind-the-scenes classes, you know, for theater?
She taught a variety of things.
Yeah.
Yeah. She taught, I mean, I think she taught a history of theater class, she taught a set of line classes, costume design class.
And so those are gone since she left, basically?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So something's unthinkable.
We don't have anyone in staff that's licensed to teach those particular classes.
And we don't have the ability to bring in someone like Megan to come and teach a class? Or are we...
No, I mean, we, there's a process to be properly licensed.
But it's possible.
Yes, it's possible.
Are you licensed?
I have a substitute teacher's license. I have a substitute teacher's license. And, yeah, it is possible for me to be certified as with a exemption certificate to start and then could potentially license the program fully.
Well, I just want to say it's so great to see all you students come in and then have parents support your students and even spouses come to support. And it's really nice and a great job. And just out of curiosity, do any of you plan on going further into theater after high school? Almost all of you. That's awesome. Great.
You know, I have to say.
I have a question on the technical side, since you brought it up. I've been to a few events in the auditorium, plays and the choir concerts and stuff. We gotta do something about the lighting. I mean, you got one kid like this being blind, the other kid, you can't see him in the corner. I don't know if that's something that the board needs to take a look at, if there's something we can do to correct the problem.
So it's already, it's in process. So the issue is, is our, the board where Dustin sits back in the center of the auditorium doesn't work properly. So it needs to be replaced. So I just gave our tech department the green light a month ago to replace that board. So it's coming.
We've been in touch with Dustin, asking for recommendation in terms of what kind of board. The other thing that we really do need are more instruments. We have about 50 lighting instruments at this point. And that, we went to a comparable theater for our sections. It was about a 400-seat theater, and they had 100 just outside of the stage. So the amount of lighting that we have is quite small, given the size of our theater. That's something that I've talked about with Dustin, and we've talked about working with the Hibbing Foundation. I'm hoping to meet with them and potentially write some kind of grant to gather some more lighting instruments. But I totally agree. And some of that is that the board, the light board that we have was not an intuitive board to use. It was very difficult to use. There was an outside lighting designer who came to work for the opera this summer. And he came in and he saw it, and he was like, just kind of like shrugged his shoulders. So part of it, too, will be getting a board that will be more intuitive to use, more interesting.
We spend so much money, I shouldn't say we, we raise money, private individuals raise money to make that such a beautiful auditorium that you sit in there and you're trying to look around and you can't see anything going on on the stage. It just takes away from what I think it could be.
Absolutely. And I think it's important to note, you know, that space, it is a beautiful historic space, and it's a really challenging space for high schoolers to work in. It's 1,800 seats. So, and it was built at a time when theater was really kind of a stand-and-deliver kind of theater, that people would stand and they would have these broad gestures, and they would project their lines, which works really well for some kinds of theater. That's why I did a Shakespeare in there. But I think for the type of acting that we are used to in a contemporary setting from watching movies, that there was an acting revolution in the '30s and '40s that really moved towards realism. And that theater doesn't invite that kind of realism because if you're sitting on stage with someone and having this really small interaction, you can't see it from 200 feet away. So it is, that's part of the reason the musical is so successful in that space. And then it's part of the reason I sat everybody on stage with us for the most recent play, so that we could really have a really different experience in that space. It can be, it's a beautiful space, and it can also be a challenging space to work in, especially with student actors who are really just learning how to project their voices. So.
I just want one more comment. You know, Hibbing's always been sports, sports, sports. We all know that, you know, focusing on sports. And I just think this is fantastic. There are so many kids that aren't into sports and don't want to play sports. And this is their world. This is where they fit in. You know, other kids have their basketball team or their volleyball team. That's their people. These kids have their theater. That's their people. And there's a lot of kids that don't play sports. We need this program. And other arts programs. But this is so important. I'm just all for this, really. I'm so thankful for all you kids and for you and everyone. I really am.
And that appetite is huge for the younger groups as well.
And I think you are, you hit the nail on the head when you said, if we can really grow our theater program into something, we can attract kids to come to Hibbing.
I think so.
Because you can't always do that with sports. You know, if you're not winning, no one's gonna come here and play sports. You know, but if you've got a fantastic theater program with this auditorium, people would actually, I think, come here and enroll their kids here for that. But, yeah, so, that's all.
So I just want to thank you, Megan, for what you've done for the program and congratulate all of you on the great performances you've done this year. And you know what? I recognize the importance of theater and drama and all those programs that really will provide you with lifelong skills. I mean, just keep going because they're really important, no matter what field you choose to be in. So, thank you.
We'll do what we can to help out. I'm sure the board's all together.
So, I have to ask one more question on the new board. Is that gonna give us more flexibility in lighting or the opportunity to add if we need to or if we can? It will be easier to change the design because it is a more intuitive system. I think it'll be easier for the tech folks who work at the school to use the board. I mean, the board that we have right now, Dustin can barely use. So some of it was just, it was too much, far too much board for us. So I think that will be part of it. Additional flexibility will also come with additional instruments. So buying some of those instruments. So I believe what happened when we did the renovation is that we replaced all of our traditional fixtures, which were electric incandescent fixtures, with LED fixtures, which are great and super flexible, but we should have kept all of the incandescents, too.
That was my thought, that they got rid of on my back.
So that we could use all of those, because that also produces a fairly different light. So the more instruments you have, the more flexibility you have in sort of designing, designing a space, designing the stage look.
Instrument, you mean lights?
That's what I mean. Yes, I'm sorry, by the different, the individual light fixtures. So will that help so the lighting color on the stage and what, how people look is more correct? Are you thinking specifically of the most recent concert? I know there was some shenanigans at the most recent concert. I've heard some things about, you know, the color on the stage. Well, those LED instruments do look a little different. Even their sort of neutral white looks different than an incandescent fixtures, neutral white would look. The nice thing about LEDs is that if you want to change the color, you don't have to drop the light bar and stick a plastic gel in front of it. You just press a button and you say you want it to be this color. So those are very convenient fixtures and super useful. But having a mix of both would be better. And we would cover our stage space better. And we could hang more. The other problem is that because we took the footlights out, we don't have a lot of front-facing light. No, we didn't install any bars or anything. So we don't have a lot of front lighting, which is why you get these big shadows over the faces, which is a perennial problem with those presidium-style theaters, until you put lighting out in the house. So some of it is just, there's so much goodwill in the community about the space, and so many entities use the space. And that's why I feel like the technical director position is a powerful one because that's one person who has industry knowledge that could hold, that could really sort of track that space. And it may need to be some kind of partnership. It may need to be a city-school partnership. I think there's a lot of ways it could be constructed, we may have to think creatively about how to get that position filled. But that is the big problem with the auditorium right now. So many people use it, but there's no one decider, right? There's no one person who's like, this is the right, best practices way to do things. Or where to store things, or how to put the shelf up or take the shelf down, or how to run the rigging, or how to rig things. That's really what we're lacking. And so that would be a powerful, a powerful position to fill.
Would it be hard to fill that? I mean, is there anyone out there that would be qualified?
I think there are people out there that are qualified. I think you would have to construct it in a way that's attractive. And you might, you know, you probably, if we wanted as a part-time position, you, it could appeal to someone who's certainly retired and, you know, worked in the cities or worked in professional theater and wants to keep their fingers in the game but doesn't want to be there all the time. Yeah, I think there are people out there. And I have a few connections if you guys want to hear more later about. There's a designer out at, Yuvan Morris, who was here this summer, and he and I talked about that position. He was actually employed by a similar kind of like joint-funded position. So I've done a little bit of digging into how you could construct the position and how you might attract someone. I did write a job description that I gave to Keith Turner. I don't know if he ever forwarded that to you. I could get that to you guys, too, if you wanted to look at what a job description would look like. It was actually pulled from a similar position in Wisconsin Public School. So at least it would give you a model of what he might be looking for.
Because haven't we been talking about this since the theater got updated or updated? You know, that the need for someone?
Yeah, we talked at one point about having a third-time recording director.
Like manager, yeah.
Well, let me know. I'm always happy to come answer questions or field ideas. I'm the resident expert at the moment. So please use me as a resource. I want to be in partnership with you. Yeah, I'm here to see the thing forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
If I could just say to Megan, so when I came here, the first year that I came here, since four years ago, our theater/drama program was non-existent. We didn't even have a person on staff to run a play. So we partnered with Chisholm for a year, sent our Hibbing kids to Chisholm so we could, at least our kids could be a part of a production. And so since that has happened, and you can see what you've, as a team, I won't say, oh, you, because I mean, there's Megan, there's Sue, there's, there's a team. You've created something that's powerful. And it deserves credit. And you, I applaud you for your passion in doing it because you took us where we had no students participating, no coach, no program. We're back, we're back to where we were at least prior to that debacle. So, so thank you. It's huge. It's huge.
Thanks. Megan, one more question.
Sure.
About how many students do we have that participate? I'm gonna just say in drama in general, whether that's one act. Let's say we have a group of about 35 to 40 that are actively involved, and probably 25 of them are in every production that we do.
I like how you brought in the elementary kids for that Fall Musical.
Oh, it's happening again as well.
That was, that was fantastic. Oh, that was awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Item A is a motion to accept the resignation of Christine Sundvall, Assistant Girls Hockey Coach, effective April 18th, 2023. Over.
Moved by Director Volter, supported by Director DeWorty. Any discussion?
Applications of the Philly.
Absolutely, yes. I don't know where we're at in that process, but yes.
Hold on, if you ever see it.
Thank you again, everybody.
Yes, thanks for having us. Thanks for the time.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to stay if you wish.
I tried.
Our meetings are very exciting.
And we have a lot of drama.
Oh, we do, that's not true.
We accepted the resignation of the head coach.
Not Pete.
Didn't we?
Pete's still there.
Oh, yes.
I thought, which head coach do we accept the resignation of?
Recently.
Was it soccer?
Jeffrey Nice had stepped down from one of our soccer programs. Girls are boys, I'm not sure which.
I must have been dreaming. I thought it was a hockey one.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Excuse me. Item B is a motion to accept the resignation of Dana Lindstrom, Junior High Varsity Hockey Coach, effective April 19th, 2023.
So far. Moved by Director Volter, supported by Director DeWorty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the hiring of Brianna Odegaard to job number two, Secretary Clerk One, 22.5 hours per week, Monday through Friday, 12 months, Building and Grounds Department, effective May 3rd, 2023. Move.
Support.
Moved by Director Egan, supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion, Sue? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D is a motion to approve the following: 2023 summer school teachers. They are Susan Schwartz and Stephanie Wesley for grades nine through 12, 60 hours each.
Someone.
Yes, sir.
Moved by Director DeWorty, supported by Director McGloughlin. Any discussion?
I got a question. So I had emailed Mrs. Sikora on this. Now, this was a long, long time ago. I had asked if our summer school at this point is strictly just to catch up for students who are behind? Or if it's also open for students who want to get ahead? And it isn't.
It isn't.
So we used to do that, I mean, a long time ago when I was in high school. Because I, me and my friends did that. Is that anything that we would look at doing?
Boy, I mean, so, so the whole process for summer school is actually dictated by Minnesota State statute and MDE as credit recovery. And you have to have a qualifying event to take the class. You have to fail. You have, maybe you're pregnant, maybe you're homeless. There's different qualifiers to. So I would say if they, if they met one of those criteria, yes. But if it's.
Otherwise, no. That time has passed.
Yes, yeah, I would believe so.
You all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item E is a motion to approve the following: 2023 summer school teachers. Shannon Rocco for grades nine through 12. This is for the first two weeks of summer school only, and 30 hours total.
So move.
Or?
Moved by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item F is a motion to approve the following: ALP night school teachers for the 2023-2024 school year. They are Deb Teakin, lead teacher, and the following for two hours per week, Sean Alasba, Kelly Belgo, excuse me, Emily Erickson, and Shannon Rocco.
So far.
Moved by Director Volter, supported by Director DeWorty. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item G is a motion to approve the hiring of Samantha Haas as a 1.0 FTE-ECSE teacher, Washington ELC, effective August 28th, 2023.
So move.
Support.
Moved by Director McGloughlin, supported by Director Volter. Any discussion?
Is this replacing someone or is this?
This is. It's not an add. It is replacing. And I believe it's a move from one of our sped teachers. It's a move to a sped behavior interventionist position.
Oh, does this special add for the early childhood? Or what is?
It would be a combination of special ed and some teaching, yes.
So a classroom?
Not necessarily, because since it's early childhood, it's more programming that happens. It could happen during the day. It could be some classes in the evening. It's not necessarily all just straight-up classroom.
Classroom, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item H is a motion to increase Kristin Niamagi from a 0.7 FTE school readiness teacher to a 1.0 FTE school readiness teacher, Washington ELC, effective August 28th, 2023. Over. Or?
Moved by Director Volter, supported by Director Egan. Any discussion?
I just, just.
Is this one classroom?
So this is. And so what we're doing here is right now, Miss Niamagi is, she is our three-year-old teacher at the Early Learning Center. We're gonna increase and add another section for three-year-olds. We have, we have lots of three-year-olds interested in being part of our program. And then she is also gonna be adding a half-day component for four-year-olds that might not want the full-day program. And we had a lot of parents when we registered last year that said, "Boy, if you had a half-day, I'd take that, but I don't want my four-year-old there all day long." So we heard that, and we're adding and creating some space for half-day four-year-olds. So this, this is an add. Again, I mean, we've talked about this program and this building and this, our facility down there, about it not being fully funded, right? That this is an investment in our future. Hopefully, it's gonna grow our kindergarten numbers. But we got some really good news about a week ago, I believe, that there's voluntary pre-K, there's voluntary pre-K funding. It gets paid out at .6 of an ADM of a full-time student for four-year-old programming. We've applied for years, have never been accepted, or never been given the funding. And there's a limited number of seats in the state of Minnesota. I think they fund something like 6,000 to 8,000 seats statewide. And if you got in in the beginning 10 years ago and got, your grandfather didn't get to keep your seats. And they haven't added any additional seats. And they haven't added any additional seats until now at the legislature. They're going to, looking to double that number. If it passes, it hasn't, it's not completed yet. And because of our partnership with Head Start and because of what we did down here this last year, we're like on the top of the list to get the next seats. So if it comes through and it passes, we're going to get some funding. But the cool thing is, we just found out that there was available seats throughout the state that didn't get utilized this year. And we had applied like a what-if, like if you don't have all of the seats filled in Minnesota, we'd like, we'll take some of that money. So we were actually approved for this current school year, which we weren't planning on it. They will fund fifty-eight seats for us. So we don't know exactly what that looks like. We think it's, you know, if all the stars align, it's a little over a quarter, little over a quarter of a million dollars for us that we're going to get in back pay funding for this year. But there's some other things at play that we might have to refund some of the tuition for some of these parents that paid to, to get that money. And there's some, some of our scholarship kids that qualified for scholarship that we might have to return a little bit of that money to the state to get this quarter of a million. But it was just really good news. It was, in, in a time where we're making, you know, we're talking about reductions and programs and layoffs and, you know, when I got the email that we might get some additional funding, it was just.
So does this mean lower rates for parents next year if that comes through?
It would be free. There would be.
Okay, because like Virginia's free.
Yes, it would be, it would be free if they qualify, yes.
For all three and four-year-olds?
For all, for, for sure, for all of our school readiness programming for four-year-olds. The three-year-old one is a little bit.
Maybe not three, but four. Nice, that would be great. Yeah.
So the fifty-eight seats that they had funding available for, for this year
Yep.
will be carried forward then into next year, those fifty-eight seats?
No, it's just a one-time deal that they, nobody, somewhere in the state, fifty-eight seats were available. And since we had asked and said, hey, if somebody doesn't use other seats, please consider us, other districts did a similar thing. So it's just a one-time for this year, but that, that funding is allotted for in both the governor's proposal, the House's proposal, the Senate proposal, that they do want to add seats. So I think it's coming, but I've said that to you before around this year, last time, when I said I thought we were going to get something, then it all changed, so I'm a little bit less optimistic this year, but I'm certainly hopeful, so.
So how many seats did we apply for?
We applied for, I think, seventy-two, I think is what I, because we had to go off our current registration numbers. So I think we had seventy-two four-year-olds registered at the start of this school year, so we potentially could get point-six of an ADM for all of those seats, which would be huge for us. And that would be a little bit closer to four hundred thousand dollars if we got all those seats and everybody. It's also based on their attendance, so if a student misses a lot of school, we don't, we don't get all that revenue. But if they came every day, attended our program, it could potentially be about four hundred thousand for us. Which wouldn't pay for the Early Learning Center, but it would sure make me sleep better at night thinking that we we have something in return.
And that's very attractive to young parents.
Oh.
You know, they don't have to pay.
And options, and the options, right? Not to just be a full-time program or to do half-days or do ultimate days. So we're, we're trying to accommodate those parents also. Yeah, pretty cool.
So do we roll in registrations for next year? Have we attracted a higher percentage of students from outside our district than typically do? Typically have?
So we've been open for about a month and I think we have fifty registered for the four-year-old program. And we have, I think he said thirty-ish in the three-year-old program. So we might have to turn some three-year-olds away. But it looks like we, you know, as of today, that we'd be able to fill all of our seats in the four-year-old program. Hopefully, we get a few more. I mean, it's early on, still yet. But yeah, we would have four classrooms again. And then the overflow that Mrs. Namaji would do with those kids that maybe don't want a full-day program.
So why do I remember Kirk saying something about eighty? He has spots for eighty? Is that, is that the four plus the three-year-old or is that just four?
Well, if he had eighty, that'd be twenty per class.
Twenty, thirty, eighty, in the four-year-olds.
In the four-year-old program.
So he, so we could take more. We can still take more four-year-olds.
We could. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a ratio that we, that we have to meet, adult-to-student ratio.
Yeah.
And I believe it's ten to one, and then it gets a little more complicated. It could actually go into five to one in certain circumstances. So we have to take that into consideration too, that twenty kids, we should have three and a half adults in a room. Or at least four adults in a room. And so we're kind of walking that fine line too. And it's difficult. We struggle finding PSAs to take those spots. The classroom teacher spots we're able to fill, but the PSA spots are a little bit more difficult, so. But it's that, we got to, we have to maintain that ratio. So he has to be aware of that throughout the year when kids come and go, that we don't go above that ten-to-one threshold, so.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we move to item A, administrative reports. Any different directors?
Yep. I'll report on, there was a wrap-up meeting of the World's Best Workforce on April twenty-fourth. And you know, it was really powerful to listen. As part of that, they went around the room and talked about the PLCs and what they've done during those early-out days. And I think back to some of those early conversations and some of the things that they've done, they talked individually by building what they've done, what they've done district-wide. And I think it's absolutely amazing. And if, if there's any way we can highlight some of those things in our community, you know, sometimes it's a difficult situation or a difficult day for parents, but I think it, it really pays off. So who goes to that team again? It's amazing.
Well, I don't know if anybody knows, or all of you know, the football program has that building out there that they, people donated funds and they built that locker room building. And it never got finished. So we really, essentially, we haven't been using it. So the football program's been looking for grants, money and things to get lockers in there by August so that they can, they were headquartered out of the Lincoln School and they're going to actually be headquartered out of the new field now, but they need lockers. So anyway, this fantastic parent volunteer, his name is Chad Booth. He, he was a great volunteer for US Steel, so he was awarded a five-thousand-dollar grant, we may have talked about this, and he donated to our football program. Well, now, he just, and I'm, I'm part of this group because I'm doing, helping him do some brand writing, not with, without my name on anything or anything. But anyways, Chad just found out he got thirty thousand dollars from US Steel.
Wow.
Yeah, so, and, and five, another five thousand from Lakehead Constructors. So now, I mean, he has single-handedly raised forty thousand dollars for that building. And so they're, they're getting close now to, I think, we can actually order, maybe not all the lockers because we really need lockers. There's two sides to the locker room. And for sure, we're going to get lockers on the one side for the Hibbing team, you know, obviously. So I think we have enough money now to do that. So it's very, very exciting. And Tyler has been in the loop, of course, and Keith Turner has been in the loop. And so, yeah, so I just wanted to tell you that that was fantastic news today.
It actually is, yeah.
And I think they're going to keep looking for more funds, but, and then there's always the Olm's fund. I, I talked to Jim Bymark and he said, yes, they would take a, we can submit to them also for more help, but they've already given us so much money for that field. But they, they're a potential source still if we needed something extra to finish the floors or the whatever, you know, showers or. But it's really, it's sad because that building was built two thousand and five, I was told, and really has not been used. Oh, it should be used. And it can be used for track, boys' track, girls' track. You can lock off the two sides of it for locker rooms. So you could put boys and girls. And, and now with the other sports that'll be playing out there, it's very important that we fix that building up.
It was a big push at the time to get that done.
To get it done, and it's really since two thousand and five not been used because it's not been fixed and finished. So, yeah, so, so I'm excited about it since what they're in the field and stuff.
Well, the big thing is that the football team has decided to go, and they're going to have practices and everything.
Yeah, they're going to actually headquarter out there instead of the Lincoln School. And they should be practicing on that turf, you know.
So it'll make them faster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I still, you know, someday I would like us all to talk about a turf baseball field. And maybe in conjunction with the city of Hibbing even. Maybe putting it out between our football turf and our soccer, you know, maybe even their soccer. And I would really like to kind of push for that discussion and something.
Yeah, let's see how much money is coming out of the legislature for one thing.
Exactly.
Where priorities lie.
Yeah.
But it's a good thought.
It's pretty frustrating. My, my, one of my grandsons plays high school baseball.
Yeah.
And they haven't played here yet.
They can't do anything, no.
No, they, they go down to the cities.
Yeah.
They're not bringing it out.
Yeah, my, my son loves coaches and he's, it's just, the season is ridiculous.
They can't use their medical field?
No, 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 that's, definitely not. It's a special field.
That's what I thought, but we just wondered.
I think if you're going to try to talk to the city, they're going to want to push to do Nyberg.
And that maybe is fine too. And that would be fine too, but.
Yeah.
I did talk to Keith Turner recently though, Mike, and he said, oh, I'm, I'm in discussions with the city. So he's talking to someone about it.
There's been talks to the city about doing something in the future.
Yeah, but you know, maybe.
At, at Nyberg.
And Nyberg, and that would be great too, whatever.
Well, and maybe too, they just sent out that survey, I don't know if you saw.
I did the survey, yeah.
So maybe that's also kind of tied into that.
Maybe that'll be part of it, yeah. I know the new rec director is trying to get things going, but this was, takes a while.
Well, unfortunately, they're looking at closing some of the parks now.
Yeah.
City.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're at, that survey, did you take that survey?
I did.
I did too. And they're kind of asking like, do you use the neighborhood parks or do you use Scary Lake or, you know, where do you want? So I figured they were going to be closing parks because, you know, we're shrinking. We're not the city we used to be.
And you know what? Last night, I went over to Chisholm. They had Strong, Strongtown, I think it was, and it was.
That's where I saw that, yeah.
It's a group that works all over the United States, working with small communities. And I just encourage everybody to go online because they presented some really good information. And I think, I think we as a school board have been doing a really good job in managing our resources. And I feel like it aligns with a lot of what they were saying. And we have to be cautious because it's not just funding for today, but it's looking at the burden we're creating for our communities for decades to come. And unfortunately, I feel as though we, and I say that collectively, communities, cities, schools, we're left dealing with a lot of that right now and aging infrastructure and we need to maintain. And I just think it's a good thing to go online and take a look at that, so.
Okay, speaking of Chisholm, hold me right along. Committee meetings, Valentin is coming at five.
Oh, yeah.
Any committee reports?
I'd like to, welcome back, Alex.
Hearing none.
Oh, yes, Alex, welcome back. Yes, congratulations. What did you have?
Hearing none, go to item nine, administrative business. Sir Alex, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On behalf of the board.
We'd like to see pictures.
I would.
Yes, please, what's the name?
Benjamin.
For the public. You can make the announcement.
Hey, my son was born on April twelfth, so I got a few days off work.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item A.
Item A is a motion to approve the group life insurance rates effective July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Has been entered.
Chair, move.
Support.
Supported by Director Egan. Any discussion?
I was pleased to see that there was no rate increase, so that was good. Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve the purchase of service agreement between ISD number seven oh one and Gail Roselle for vision impaired services for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, as we've entered.
So.
Support.
Moved by Director Volter, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Yes.
I want to commend Ethan Letzka. He always does an amazing job putting together information to help us understand and make really good decisions, so I appreciate that.
I do too.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. This guy, discussion items, I just got to have one quick thing here. Reannounced Valentin's at five to six. That was public announcement last week.
Correct.
And then I was at a two-week, two-day conference in Hankville and ended up talking with, about science classes and Chisholm is in the same hole we are, so they would be willing, according to the board chair. See if we can come up with something. We start to watch for financing and then how many kids they have and, but something is.
For the physics? You're talking about?
Can I give you just a quick update on that too?
Sure.
So Mrs. Sikora came in yesterday and she had been working with Chisholm, their high school principal, Mark Morrison. Chisholm has, I believe, either two or three students that they've confirmed would be interested in, in being a part of our physics program here. So I think between those, the two or three that they have there, I think she's like close to a fifteen number. So she asked yesterday, can I put it in the schedule? I want to move ahead, I want to do it. And the only thing that I, I said, yes, they, they have a plan. I think Mr. Erickson is going to take one of Mr. Sandus's chemistries and he would be on an overload for next year, Mr. Erickson would. And then Carl would be able to teach physics. The only question I had, so I, I called Education Minnesota's area rep, his name is Joe Sarara. I just, before I say yes, Renee, push the button, I want to make sure that there's nothing contractually that somebody's going to grieve in August and we upset families and kids that we told they're going to have this class and then for some reason we can't run it. I don't see any problem or any issue. He didn't see any problem or issue, but he said he was going to just ask the questions to some of his supervisors and make sure there isn't something he's missing. But we, we haven't really done this before where a student from another high school comes in for an hour or two hours and pops in and takes our classes before. So I just want to make sure that we're doing it correctly. And I would just say to the board, as, you know, two kids from Chisholm and one hour in a class for next year, I, I would recommend that we don't even try to change hands with any money. That we just do this out of goodwill and willing to help kids and help each other and, and use it as a trial to see how it goes.
Could we put a caveat in there?
Sure.
By saying, under the provision that we get twenty, at least twenty people or something like that in number, so we wouldn't be held liable.
You mean like going ahead if we had additional classes?
Or if we didn't have enough, if we didn't need or afford it?
The only thing I, I would just caution with that is like when we get in, we get committed to a number. And some school boards have done that. They've set class sizes at certain numbers. It makes it difficult because when you have an arbitrary, when you have a twenty, if you've got nineteen and we get to twenty, does that mean we're hiring a teacher?
Put a ceiling on it.
Right, right, right. I just.
You cap it and then, then you're not held liable for anything like that. We're doing our best to offer what we can, but we can't go in hole either.
Well, the other piece of Education Minnesota, actually, the, our union officials and Chisholm's union officials and this Joe Sarara, that's the head of the region. They met two days ago, one day ago? I'm sorry, I can't remember, but they met in Chisholm. And he asked the question, he goes, he said to them, he said, I could see that Hibbing and Chisholm are starting to talk about things. As a union, would you like me to approach the superintendents and say, we'd like to be there and have a seat at the table so we can help problem solve ahead of time? I said, absolutely. I was waiting for our, our May seventeenth meeting here with Tom Watson to see where we're going. Because if for some reason we're not participating or that changes, I didn't want to start making promises to our bargaining groups. But I planned after the seventeenth, and I have a little more direction, that I'd pull in all of our bargaining groups and give them an update where we're at and invite them to be a part of this conversation. Because we can, right now, when you, and I, you might not know this, but I know some of the background stuff between Rockbridge and Evolith. And they're struggling because they, they took both contracts and just threw them out and said, let's start from scratch. And I would never recommend doing that. I would, you know, I would go with whichever contract is probably the better of the two and let that one guide your, your practice going forward. But I want, I, I want to say that, that I want our staff at the table of these conversations because they can help us solve all the kinks that we haven't even thought of yet.
Okay, well, we're going forward with that. Do you see item A, you have.
And if I can just add, you know what? I think this is what education's all about. This is what kids are going to take with them.
For the kids.
There have been talented, talented people over the decades that have. that have graduated from both Chisholm High School and Hibbing High School. And I'm proud of the work that this district has done and that we continue to push to be able to offer courses like CNA, like physics. I don't know how many people in either community realize with our small towns alone, it would be really financially almost impossible. But together, look at what we can offer our kids. So, I just think that's important for people in both Chisholm and Hibbing to understand that together, we're gonna provide our kids with a much more robust education and opportunity, so.
It's a work in progress.
Yeah.
So, we may solve the physics problem.
Okay, is this college, college card physics?
I don't know yet.
That's, I, I believe so, cause I think Carl is one of the few that has that certain.
He's able to teach that, yeah.
So, it'd be a SITS course.
But at least it's physics.
Item A.
Item A, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have a notice, uh, of desire to negotiate from the Hibbing Administrative Unit. And again, I've shared with them, and we're waiting to see what happens at the legislature. So, I'm, I'm guessing sometime this summer, we'll probably sit down and start, start talking.
Thank you. Director Polter?
Well, I'm working for you.
Meetings are adjourned without objection. Four forty-five and a half.